Good evening. This September 1st meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. We are back in the high school library this week. We are on the third day of school, and I would like to welcome Olivia Gass, who is the student representative for this school year, to the school board, and we'll be hearing more from Olivia a little bit later on in the meeting. Welcome aboard. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Note that we do have a non-meeting at the end of the meeting, after the meeting, regarding strategy or negotiations with the collective bargaining. Any other changes or additions to the...
I just got to move to approve.
Okay, move to approve the agenda. Give her a second. Second from Brian. All in favor? Seven in favor. The student rep in favor that the agenda is approved. And that brings us to public comment. Is there anybody who is interested in speaking for public comment this evening? One?
Hi, I'm Gian Jelsy. You've seen me before. I'm here representing multiple people again. I just got a couple things. First of all, thank you guys for your time and thank you for all of your work. I did not have the opportunity to thank you guys last time due to time constraints, but I wanted to make sure you know that I am appreciative of all the work that you do. The first thing is that I'd just like to ask that the mask mandate not be lifted until two conditions are met. One is that 11 and under are able to get the vaccine and have had the opportunity to be fully vaccinated. And the second part is that the transmission rate in the community needs to be a low transmission, which is defined by the CDC as less than five cases per 100,000 over an average of seven days and a positivity rate of less than 5% over seven days. So pretty good, easy benchmarks to measure, and we can know what they are, so it wouldn't be a surprise to anybody coming. It's one of the reasons why a date doesn't really work. The pandemic doesn't function that way. It'd be lovely if it did, and we could say, oh, it's going to stop tomorrow, but not how it works, and so these will give you just numbers that are solid. The second part is that I want to let you guys know that I fully support DEI in the school district, that it is pivotal for our children to understand the true history of the United States, including the ugly bits, and that it's essential for our teachers to be able to discuss those things in a honest manner. We need to know our history to know where we are and where we're going. I find the law that was passed to be ridiculous, indecipherable, and probably unconstitutional. And so I want to let you guys know that I support anything that will be done with the teachers and the district, including potentially a lawsuit if we get sued for defying an unconstitutional item that was shoved into the budget. The last part is that, as you guys discussed, I believe in the August 4th meeting, that you guys have a difficult task ahead of you with trying to decipher what to do regarding COVID when people of the board are not experts in the field. And I'm glad that you acknowledge that and that you understand that and that you've taken the steps of hiring consulting and epidemiologists to understand those things. So one of the things is that unfortunately, you guys are positioned where you have a responsibility to be extra careful on what you say in these meetings under public record, and that misinformation, if it's said by mistake or ignorance or with intent, is literally dangerous in this case. And in this case, we unfortunately had a school board member, Brian Sisneros, say a couple things in the last one that were incorrect. COVID is not transmitted primarily by fumites. It's aerosols. We've known this for over a year. Washing hand helps, but it's not sufficient, and that the mitigation measures listed by the CDC are not in numerical order, and that masking is actually one of the most effective ways of doing it. We're seeing the results of this play out on the national scene, and we're seeing it insofar, well, we just started and we'll see how it goes. But as we have an epidemiologist...
We're at three minutes.
But as we have an epidemiologist to consult, if this was a mistake, I would ask Mr. Sisneros to recant those comments and apologize. Again, thank you guys so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Approval of the minutes for August 18th. Denise?
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 18th.
August 18th.
Oh, October. Moving ahead a little rapidly. Yes, August 18th.
Second from Tom. We have a request from Sue to clarify Brian's motion on Page 5 expenditure of Facilities Development Capital Reserve Fund. That should read, "Brian Sisneros made a motion to approve the use of $200,000 from the Facilities Development Capital Reserve Fund for high school air conditioning," second by Al Hallen, motion passed 7-0. The distinction there is to add the dollar amount, which Brian did actually state. They went back and reviewed the tape. That is important for the trustees of the trust funds when they handle that transaction. Other additions or corrections? All those in favor approving the minutes? Seven in favor. The student rep in favor. The minutes are approved. All right. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
There'll be a bunch tonight.
All right. Well, there's been a few things that have happened since the last school board meeting.
Good evening. Misty Lowe, Massway School. First of all, I just want to comment that even though we're still physically distanced, this feels more intimate. At the stage, we were also far away from one another, so it's nice to see you again. I just wanted to talk briefly that our teacher workshop days for the district as well as for Massway at the building level were very successful. It was wonderful to have all the staff back together in the building. We are getting to know our new staff members and trying to support them through their transition to Massway School. Then we are, as you know, on our third day of school. Each day gets a little bit easier. As soon as we tighten up routines and try different things, the school day just goes better and better. So we're thrilled to have the children. We have some children who've been out of school since a year ago March, so as you can imagine, parents and students are a little bit nervous and have a lot of questions, so we're supporting them through all of that as well. But all in all, it's been a terrific opening to school.
Thanks, Misty.
Good evening, everyone. David Goldsmith, MoHaramet. Much like Misty has said, the opening at MoHaramet has been really terrific. I really just want to recognize all of our staff for continuing to really just continue where they left off last year, building a really strong community with our students and our families. Our students are already engaged. They're excited to be there. Our families have been doing a really wonderful job already to continue our pickup and drop-off procedures, make sure their students come to school prepared, not only with their school needs, but masks and water bottles and everything to help make our day run really smoothly. We're working out all the routines. It's really terrific. We do have a lot of new staff in our building, and we have a lot of returning staff who are in new positions, and so it's a really exciting environment for a lot of our staff taking risks and trying out new things, and everyone's being really successful and supportive of each other. It's been a great three days, and we're excited for it to continue.
Javishar, principal at the middle school. I've been doing this for a little while. I'll tell you the excitement in terms of this opening day was, it was really awesome. I guess the best word I also would use about this lot is just appreciation, okay? In terms of having all the students there, all the staff there, it's one of those like unsaid things, but you could just see it in everybody's eyes that we appreciate having an opening day with all the students there, the staff there, worked really hard to be prepared, so it was great. Just real quick announcement, Bill Sullivan and I met with Paul Bamford. Paul is actually organizing the soccer fundraiser in a few weeks up here at Oyster River High School, and we met with him to determine some times to have like an open house at the middle school when students aren't there for alumni, and we worked with Paul to create times that he felt was best that alumni would be available to come through the building, and those times are Friday, 9:24, from 3:30 to 5 o'clock, and also Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00. Bill Sullivan and I will be there. We'll work with Jim Rozicki from Facilities to make sure we have appropriate staffing to help people out, so something to really look forward to. Thank you.
Good evening. Rebecca Noe from the high school. First, for our workshop days, I finally got to meet all of the staff, so that was really nice. I'd met maybe about two-thirds over the summer. I've gotten some wonderful feedback from the staff just about how those days went, and we bought the entire staff T-shirts with our theme for the year, which is Better Together, and everybody wore those on the first day. So it was, one, it was really nice to bring us together as a community, but also it was easy for students to recognize staff, who they could ask questions, learn their way around the building, so that was just a nice identifier. There's a really positive energy and excitement back in the building. To have the kids back, the staff are really excited to be back, and it's palpable. So I think that kids have really enjoyed their first three days. The freshmen last Friday had their class meeting during orientation, and then the sophomores, juniors, and seniors had their class meetings on Tuesday. Our class presidents got up and spoke to their classes and introduced some ideas that we have for Spirit Week and activities coming up. The junior and senior classes are voting on their class T-shirts presently, so we can get those in before Spirit Week and hopefully wear those on the Friday when we have our outdoor pep rally. And tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with student leadership again to start looking at those plans and implementing ideas that the kids have, and so the school year is up and running, and I think everyone's really excited that we're back together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. And from the board?
Learned an interesting tidbit this week in our weekly construction meeting for the middle school. The project is now 74% complete.
Are you sure it's 74 and not 75?
74. Well, keep in mind, there's a little disclaimer here. 74%, 100% would be, the building is completely knocked down, fields are built, and everything else. 74% not from when the building is opened, so keep that in mind. It's kind of skewed a little bit, but the entire project from beginning to end is 74% complete right now, so I just thought I'd share that with you. Everything's going swimmingly, although there's always room for issues that are out of our control. Is that correct, 74%?
Yeah, 74. We base it on the billing, Michael. So we get the billing, we see what the percentage is, and that's what we tell the world, so the billing is based on the total project. The contractor and the architect continued to do an incredible job of problem solving. They run into a hiccup, they sit down together, they figure it out, and they move on, so you know, this project is really probably one of the most amazing construction projects I've ever experienced. I think I've either been involved in, I think, seven different projects in my career, and by far this is the one that's gone the smoothest, with just really great people working it.
Anecdotally, I saw Rob Sullivan, one of the construction managers, out in front of the school on the first day of school, helping to make sure all the traffic moves smoothly with the new traffic pattern. Yeah, great. Others? Tom?
Yeah, I had an experience last week that I wanted to share. I just dropped off a book for Kara Sullivan that I thought she might be used in her persuasive writing course that she each created, and coming out of the building then, I met Sean Kelly, and I asked him how the mouth, you know, I talked him about how the Mouth of the River was like must-read for the school board and how proud we are of that, and then I asked him about this linguistics course that he had created and that is going to be in his second year. And then Scott McGrath comes out, and of course I asked him how the cross-country team's doing, and then I asked him how his like reinventing school project, whether that's going to happen, and I know Al and Dr. Morris, some of us have been to that, and I thought in the space of 15 minutes, I talked to three teachers, each of whom have created a kind of legacy, something that's their signature, you know, that wasn't told, they weren't told to do this, they kind of created this from the bottom up. And I think that as we go forward, I think that's so valuable about our school district, that we create the space and encouragement where people can create their own legends in a way. You know, they can create, take their passions and create something that becomes truly memorable and unique, and I just thought in about 15 minutes, I kind of clocked that, so I just wanted to share that.
Thanks, Tom. All right. That brings us to the assistant superintendent's report.
Good evening. So the Tuesday, I'm sorry, the Thursday and Friday prior to students arriving were the teacher workshop days that the principals alluded to. During that time, we had district-wide work. Dr. Morris welcomed everybody back, and we, the faculty and staff engaged in trauma-informed practice training. It was remembering some of the training that we had gone through and just getting ready for the school year, so that's something that collectively everybody experienced, as well as things like reviewing school board policy. And we also, thanks to Teresa Peroya, had a wellness fair for the faculty and staff, which went, was wonderful. There were prizes involved and activities involved. There were some cupcakes from sweetened memories from Durham, so that was a wonderful, wonderful two days, busy, but definitely beneficial. We have, this year, we're going to be offering faculty online and on-demand seminars. They're mini courses. They're called the Beat Teacher Burnout Institute, and working with Mike Anderson, this has become a possibility for all faculty, and they can do it on demand, and it is professional development that is self-paced and hopefully makes it a little bit more accessible for faculty that are interested in it, and we're very excited about that. And I also just want to recognize the principals. They're not going to do it themselves, but I will do it for them. They do a lot of work behind the scenes over the summer with their administrative team to get ready for the school year, to get ready for faculty and for students, and I really want to thank them for recreating a different opening than in the past even with some of the new protocols that are in place, and that takes a lot of time and dedication, so I just want to recognize them. Thank you.
And Michael, as we go forward in the future, once Suzanne is done with her report, we're going to invite Catherine in right behind her to do the metrics, so we have that done every single time we meet.
So I think you guys will have a hard copy put in your folders. So this is the metric that Dr. Megan Harvey sent out this week, August 30th, and provided us with this information. If you look at the document, it's a little bit more streamlined than the one that we had prior to last year. There were some other categories, so we've really looked at what's super important in terms of our school environment to be able to look at this in terms of our mitigation plan. And so here's the areas that we're looking at this week. Of course, we are substantial in terms of new cases per 100,000 in the past 14 days. We are above 100. We're at 280.9 as of August 30th. In terms of percent positive, again, we're in substantial, which is above 10%. We're at 10.1%. And as you guys know, these numbers have been going up even the last couple days, so this is just as of Monday. The transmission rate is at 1.08, puts us in the moderate range. We're probably in substantial at this point. I just tried to look to see if it's updated on the COVID-19 state dashboard, and it's not yet. ICU capacity, when this was published, it was at 62%, but I do believe we're over on that because when I just looked at the amount of available beds and ICU beds, there are about 18% available as of today, so that's going to be shifted. In terms of our staffing capacity, of course, we are open and we are doing okay. I think what's important is we do have some staffing issues right now, so this is complicated already with not having enough pair educators and bus drivers, so we are still short 11 pair educators and 10 bus drivers. So we are impacted by staffing, not necessarily by COVID-19 yet, but if we become even slightly impacted by staffing, it will have a big impact because of the amount of staff that we are still searching for. And we met again today to talk through some additional plans to try and attract more staff. And then in terms of local contact tracing ability, this is when we meet with the nurses, and they are okay right now, so they feel like they are, and we met today, they are doing okay with this. Part of the reason is DHHS changed their guidelines in terms of the contact tracing piece. They have been doing contact tracing. They have been doing a lot of education with families. They feel like they're okay right now, though. So that's this week's update.
Just a question about any update as far as the SAS program and when that might get up and running?
Sure. So Suzanne and I actually have a tour tomorrow with Jeff LePac. He is the UNH employee who's helping us get this going. So SAS stands for, it's basically the Surveillance Testing Program, Students Safer at School. And also, the UNH is using Stuart Ambulance to do the testing, and so that individual is also coming with Suzanne and I tomorrow to look at the different sites at the schools that we could do some of this testing. We're very close to being able to roll this out. We have a target date that's about a couple weeks away. We're waiting on the final consent form still that we can push out to parents. UNH had that going through their legal, and DHHS had to reapprove it, so we're just waiting for that from them. So we will be sending that out with an explanation of the program. Again, the program is focusing on testing unvaccinated individuals, students and staff, but if you are vaccinated and a parent wishes to opt into this for their vaccinated child, we're going to work to accommodate that. In addition to this, we're having training from UNH. Dr. Jones is our liaison, and he'll be working with our nurses so that we may also offer some of our own testing when we're ready to do so. And these are the Bynax tests that are being sent from the state. They actually locked down them at this point, so we're, I'm actually driving to Concord tomorrow to pick up what we can pick up for the district, but now there's been such an increase in desire to have these, they are starting to, I think, I think ration them in what's available to school districts. So we'll also have that availability, which we're putting together protocols for, so it should be very shortly. And again, UNH and Stuart Ambulance will be taking care of all the coordination of the training. We'll provide the spot and the space, and parents will have to opt into any sort of testing they wish their child to participate in.
And then I have one more question, which is, any thought about possibly offering another vaccine clinic? Is, you know, is that something that might be useful for students that maybe, maybe they weren't quite old enough in the spring, or, you know, I just wondered about that.
So the state will coordinate additional vaccine clinics when they have the staff and availability to do so, so they will contact us when they're ready to do that. Certainly, I think if the booster becomes widely available, they will definitely coordinate that bigger kind of clinic with us. Right now, they're asking people to use their local, the local sites for vaccines, and I think it really comes down to staffing and just sort of ability to get out and do this.
And we'll reach out when the K through 4 vaccine is ready, we'll reach out and see if we can do that onsite. I think the number of people that would require vaccines now doesn't warrant that huge effort that we had in the last school year.
DHHS is not, if I understand it correctly, is not actively helping as much with contact tracing as they were before? I understand like they're closing at 4:30 and not taking calls on a weekend, stuff like that, or...
Yeah, well, they didn't really help last year either.
Well, yeah. Now they're just not answering the phones.
So they don't. We, we used to have our nurses just leave it on hold for 45 minutes, an hour at a time. So no, they're not. Our, with a conversation, well, with one of the trainings with Dr. Chan, he let us know that they're getting their results by positive tests, so if we're not able to submit a result to them because we, someone's reported a result to us, they're getting it on their end. Now, when it comes time for us to introduce the Bynax tests, if we're able to do those, there's going to be a link that the nurses will go on and enter that in, but we don't really have support, we haven't had support since October of last year.
I got a question. So if a parent opts in for the testing, is it come off their insurance? Is the state paying for this?
Federally funded, yeah. Federally funded, and there were different locations in New Hampshire who sought approval to be able to do this. They had to go through approvals with DHHS. UNH is one, Convened MD is one, there's a couple others, but we worked very closely with UNH this summer to have them take it on for us. They're right down the road. There's a lot of opportunity here, having them right down the road.
Tremendous capacity as well.
Tremendous capacity, and it's not going to be pool testing, which is different than last year when we met with them. It was going to be pool testing, which could require multiple tests. It really is individualized, which is great, and it's PCR-based.
When nurses log test results, are they logging all test results or only positive test results?
So they would only be logging the Bynax test results. Right now, so Dr. Chan said that the test positive results are getting from labs, that's how they're logging their data, so if we're not able to get in touch with DHHS, they're getting the log from the lab.
But if we do a Bynax test and it's negative?
If it's negative, we're just entering positive.
Okay.
Thank you, Catherine.
Yes.
So, do you want to go right ahead?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So just in following Catherine, and I just want to remind the board that you're really going to have to speak into microphones because of our masks, and it's also because it won't be heard on the audio. So the first thing I want to say is thank you to the parents who took it upon themselves to follow the protocol in the first few days of school. Across the district in both elementary schools, middle school, and high school, we had students who were held back from school because either a child was positive COVID or they were indicating that they had COVID-like symptoms. So one of the things we have to remember is COVID-like symptoms look like colds, they look like asthma, they look like typical kind of seasonal flus, and so our nurses are already taking calls about, well, my son's, our daughter's only got the sniffles. Sniffle is an indication of cold, asthma, allergies, and COVID. And so I just want to remind parents that if your child is experiencing any of those symptoms, you really should keep them home and get them tested, and like the 30-odd parents who did even as we opened school. So I just really want to thank those parents who follow the protocol and encourage all of our parents to follow the protocol, because if your child comes to school with any of those symptoms, our nurses are directed to call you and ask you to come and take them home. So it's a pretty straightforward process. It was in my first newsletter. It's been something that I've repeated since COVID started a year and a half ago, and it's something that our nurses are very faithful in following, so I'd appreciate it if the parents could take that initiative like the parents did at the opening of school. Speaking of the opening of school, I just really want to give Jay particular credit. The, he put out the new traffic pattern for probably a weekly basis over the course of a month. I want to thank Todd Selig for putting the new traffic pattern in Friday update over probably the last three weeks. And so, you know, Sue and I and Suzanne were out in the buildings, and of course, we're all keen focused in on whether the middle school traffic pattern was working, and Jay had probably half his staff surrounding his building. He just had a lot of people out there, and I have to say that it went flawlessly. You know, parents got immediately that they pulled far to the right so their children could get out on the sidewalk, and quite honestly, this is one of those moments where you think, why didn't we do this 10 years ago? Because it all made sense. We weren't, children were not getting out in moving traffic. You know, the parents would pull over, they'd let their child out, they'd pull back into the exit lane. It really was amazing, and I also want to say a great big thank you to the Durham Police Department who put people in strategic locations so that if somebody was confused, they could get redirected. It really worked extremely well, and it really is a great new pattern even without the parent access road, which by the way, was tarred last week, so if you want to see what it looks like, you can walk by the middle school. It's not open to the public, of course, because it's how our contractors are getting out at this point. Following that, I just want to talk a little bit about opening enrollment. So when we look at the enrollment, Massway and MoHaramet are actually pretty doggone close to where they were last year. Between the two schools, I think we're up one student, so literally where we left in the spring is where we picked up in the fall. The middle school is down about 30 students, but we did expect that because the incoming class was smaller than the outgoing eighth grade class, so that wasn't a surprise. The big surprise was the high school, and so I know that Tom and Al have been around with me for the last 10 years, and they've seen a spike at Massway, and they've seen a spike at MoHaramet, and they've seen a spike at the middle school. Honestly, we've never seen a spike at the high school. And one of the things I want to share with you is I contacted Sherri Fricke, who's the secretary, what's the official title?
Register.
Register at the high school, and I said, Sherri, can you give me a sense of where the kids are coming? So she sent me an email, children from Singapore, children from Ottawa, children from New York City, children from Connecticut, children from literally around the world, and of course the usual suspects of Dovering, Dover, Barrington, and Portsmouth and so forth, but it was pretty amazing when you looked at the list of where people were coming from, how far away they came, Singapore, to come to Oyster River. So one of my many projects that I think I'm going to do later in the school year is, after things have settled, write, I'm going to write a note to each of the parents who came from away, like where. away, like way, way, and ask them what attracted them to our school system. And so I'm just curious, you know, in terms of, you know, how did somebody from Ottawa find their way to Durham, New Hampshire? Maybe as simple as the university employed them. But it's just intriguing that we had that kind of growth at the high school. I know that a week ago, Rebecca and the counseling staff were panicking because the 870 number was 881. And I said, well, wait till we open and we'll start getting the requests out as well. So if we looked at this enrollment compared to October 1st of last year, we're up about 39 kids at the high school. So the net for the district is we're up just a tiny bit, which is really terrific. I know that a lot of concern was expressed about whether the homeschoolers would stay homeschooled and whether students in private school would stay in private school. The other part of that is that we have a number of homeschoolers who are back in the school this year, and we have a number of families that were in private schools last year back in the school this year. So it was just an interesting opening couple of days to look at the data, just as a reminder for everybody, including the public. Our official data isn't until October 1st. It'll fluctuate a lot in the next three weeks as people make different decisions for their families. The other observation I'd make, as I was surprised by the number of incoming seniors. It's a very unusual circumstance where a parent will up and move when they have a senior child. And so I would say probably a half dozen, Becca, of seniors who moved in this year. So that's really unusual. So just interesting stuff, nothing that creates a trend or anything, but just really interesting data this year. I did welcome the staff. I started my speech, I'll be honest, and I looked up, and the first thing that happened to me was I was overwhelmed because I hadn't seen the faculty together for so long, and it just choked me up. And it was amazing in the sense that afterwards, so many staff took it upon themselves to say thank you, and wherever I went in the district, you know, people were thanking me for the opening, and it really was just, I was so happy to see them. And I really was thrilled with the work they did last year. I told them, you know, when you give people praise, one of the things that research tells you is, then be specific about what you're praising them about. So to say, hey, I'm really glad to see you, thank goodness you worked so hard last year and you go on, it doesn't have any substance to it. And so when you're praising people, you have to be very specific. And I found specific reasons to praise every division in the high school, from teachers to parents, to bus drivers, to our cooks, and our IT staff, and our tech integrators, and our nurses. And the one group I forgot, which Suzanne didn't tonight, is our administrative staff. They were there on my list, and I went right by it. But honestly, last year, we would have failed as a district had we not had this administrative team constantly working and reworking, endless hours into weekends, trying to make sure you had the best information you could possibly have to make the decisions you were making. And so tonight, I'd like to make sure that I say that to them as well, because they're pretty extraordinary. So I sent out an opening welcome. Most of that welcome is to reiterate our COVID position. Surprising to me was, I expected, you know, what happened last year is I'd send something out and I'd get about 12 emails immediately saying, what are you thinking, kind of thing. The emails, I want to be really honest with all of you, the emails I've been getting this fall are so different than the emails I got last year. First of all, whether they're going to say something to, you know, contrary to what decision we've made, they start out with, thank you for the work you've been doing. Thank you to the board for the work you've been doing. And we weren't seeing a lot of that last year. And then, you know, if agree or disagree, then they'll follow through with whatever, what's motivated them to email us. It's been such a blessing to open up my email and not cringe as I open it up. People have been incredibly respectful, they've been appreciative. I think the fact that we opened school really made the difference for so many families, especially those families that need us to be open because they're single families and school is a safe place for their children. Families that had been under incredible distress last year, we recognize that and try to help as much as we could. The food delivery program, just an amazing effort by the district to make sure that every family had food if they needed it. And, you know, our bus drivers becoming basically food delivery people and being very appreciative of being able to help. So I think, you know, we look back at last year, it was the hardest year of my 45-year career by far, but there are a lot of things that happened last year that we can be proud of, and there are a lot of things that we could have done better, but you don't know at the moment because you're trying to make the best decision. So I just really want to say how much I appreciate our faculty and support staff across the district. Just checking on what, so I've given you a copy of a letter that I'm sending out to the community next week on DEI. One of the things that I want to say this evening is that the new legislation that was mentioned during public comment is a challenging piece of legislation in the sense that it really threatens our teachers' livelihood, and anybody could use that piece of legislation to challenge our teachers. And so I've been working on this all summer to try to figure out, you know, whether the DEI work we're doing is in violation of the new law. And I'm really pleased to say that based on my review and based on our attorney's review, the DEI work we've been doing in the district is complying with the law. And that is our position, it's our legal advice that we are, and so I wanted to make sure the community knew that, and that's why that letter will go out next week. So I'll send that letter out. I didn't want everything to land in people's laps in one day, so I'm trying to, you know, stagger the information we get out.
So can I ask you, I mean, I thought the letter was really good. I think, you know, when you look at ideas, you can either allow an idea to be framed for you, which I think is in the case what we're not doing, or you can frame the argument yourself, and I think that's where we need to go. So we've heard a lot about things that we don't do, or laws that are coming up, and what we really don't hear is about what we're actually doing. And I think that rather than allowing an argument to be framed for us, let's frame our own argument and talk about what we do, and I think that's the work that's really ahead of us.
Yep, and that's exactly what we have planned in late September, mid-October. We haven't decided on what the activity is, but the committee that exists, that's a community-based community with teachers and students, we're working on what that initial presentation of the community would look like. We want it to be something where people can have a conversation and not just pontificate at people. So we're in the process of defining that, Al, so you're dead on on that. So that's that. And then that brings us to the one thing that didn't go perfectly but never does, which is our busing system. So just in terms of reminding the public, who's the board knows this extremely well, we literally are running our bus fleet with only 2/3 of full employment. It's a 31-person division, and we have 21 drivers. And so I do also want to give Lisa Huppie credit tonight. As I've said many times, she is a savant when it comes to doing these schedules, and, you know, she's literally working with a glass that's 2/3 full, and she put together a delivery plan that is absolutely flawless in the morning, and it needs a little bit more work in the afternoon. The buses are still arriving a little bit too late at the elementary schools. But part of that, just so everybody knows, is the drivers getting used to their run. So, you know, at the very first day, Lisa has to assume that every single person and their neighbor is getting on the bus, and because we don't really have good information from parents, and if we ask for the information, we get incomplete, so it doesn't help. So what we do is she sets up her routes as if everybody who's eligible gets on the bus. She takes out, you know, most of the seniors because they drive, and she takes out half the juniors because they have their license, and, you know, starts crafting her plans around that. And so the first day, the drivers are picking up people that we didn't know who we were supposed to pick up and driving by homes that we thought we were supposed to be picking up. And so it works out that this system kind of cleans itself out by about the second week of school. So if anybody is feeling like the buses are being inconsistent, they'll become more and more consistent as we go into the second and third week of school. Even today, at Moheramit School, we were able to lop off seven or eight minutes off the run from the first day. So it just becomes more efficient. It may, you know, it may end up not being exactly as efficient as we want because we are struggling without 10 drivers. But I have to say that given what we're working with in terms of the number of drivers, it's pretty doggone good for the first few days of school, and it's improved each day. So kudos to Lisa. So Michael, that brings us to the strategic plan review. All set? So let us start with Suzanne, and she's going to review the curriculum subject area coordinators that was part of our strategic plan.
So for the district curriculum leadership structure, we have in 2000, we have a sort of a blunder of things that have happened over the past few years. And so while we've established the budget, the budget's already in place, we don't necessarily have people that are in those positions with a solid job description. So that's why it is partially completed and partially in progress in each of those years. So moving forward, really what we're looking to do is to establish the job descriptions and then identify those people that are interested in working with the vertical and horizontal alignment of curriculum in the different subject areas. And so that will be the work that we're doing moving forward. But as far as the structure itself, the budget, and the structure of the positions, those are already in place. It's going to be primarily just identifying the description and the goals for that work, and then who would be working with me on that vertical alignment.
So we'll be hiring those positions this year. We budgeted for them, and we're ready to go.
And to the front, these are existing teachers who are receiving extra stipends.
Yes, exactly.
The philosophy behind it, Yusi, is that as talented as Suzanne is, she's not certified in all of these diverse content areas, and by engaging teachers in the work, then we fill in the voids of our knowledge as administrators.
And it'll help with the vertical alignment so that we're looking at a full K through 12 experience of a student and not necessarily just isolated pockets where you can see the continuum of the curriculum. So having the classroom teachers as a part of that conversation is really very important. Thank you.
So the next piece is a world language update, and normally this would be Todd doing this because he has been worked with the committee for three years. But minus Todd, you had this presentation in the spring, and you actually had it probably the better part of a year and a half ago, and so we're just revisiting it. One of the things that, when I was going through this, that stopped us in terms of world language was we never actually adopted an outcome in world language for the strategic plan. And so I've crafted a draft outcome for your consideration. And in addition to that, Jay was thinking ahead in terms of opening the new middle school in February and aligning his schedule more closely with the high school. And he came to me with the idea of doing music and world language opposite each other in an A/B format, like we do at the high school with the whole schedule. And if he implements that schedule tomorrow, it won't be tomorrow, but he'll give you the timeline in a minute, it allows us to bring world language to grade five without adding any staff. So it would be an alternating schedule, one day it'd be music, the next day it'd be world language, along those lines. And so Jay, if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone and talking a little bit more about that in a more specific manner than I just did, that would be helpful.
Definitely, thanks, Dr. Morse. You know, true story is, you hear me talk about schedules, and when Dr. Morse mentions, you know, world language drives it, music, these are literally things I think about randomly or in the middle of the morning, real early, and I run down the stands and write them down and run them by people to see if they think it might work.
Add some colors.
What's that?
Add some colors.
Yes, yes. So again, this conversation all started last spring too, in terms of talking to my world language staff about, you know, wanting to improve the program for all students, grades five through eight. Just also, I want to put in plug for music in terms of, I consider music, and I've learned this from my music staff, like world language, music, when you start at the middle level, it's like learning a language, it really is. So how could, maybe we could connect those two? So in collaboration with my staff, how are ways we can do this? So my staff have mapped out like a timeline. Of course, we wanted to share that with you to make sure that you're okay with that. In terms of implementation, we would do it very similar, like we do with sixth grade. I would reach out to families. My staff would meet with fifth graders, give them experiences in all three languages to help them determine what language they would like to choose, and essentially start to implement this late this month. Yes, Al?
So would there be, they could pick from each of the three languages?
Correct.
Foreign language?
Yep, yep. Mandarin Chinese, Spanish, or French.
And you can do all this without adding any staff?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yes.
So you can do all this without adding any staff?
Correct.
We like to hear.
It's how he structures the schedule.
Yep. So how it would work again on an A-day, grades five through eight, a student would have music, and on a B-day, they would have world language. Of course, that would rotate throughout the whole schedule, it wouldn't work the same for every student, but that's how we would do that.
So the reason I ask that is because like in the presentation that we saw, what's presented is adding three FTE positions. One at the fifth grade and two at the elementary, which I think is like 290K. So the question is, and, you know, as we begin to struggle with the budget, could we get by with the fifth grade in this alternating schedule and only add two FTEs?
Yes, that's actually the goal. By, one of the, I credited Lisa in terms of her ability to do the transportation system. This is another place where Jay really stands out. He will map out these schedules for me to think about, and then ultimately say, what do you think? And in this case, this was amazing, you know, because, you know, we're going to try to align the middle school, high school schedules more closely. Basically, what this does is creates a baby step in that direction in this school year, and I thought it was a pretty awesome solution to concern that Denise raised, which is, you know, if we're going to bring Chinese to grade five, can we bring the other two languages to grade five and create that equity? And I thought it was a winning solution, so.
Lucky idea. I mean, Tom brought this up too in terms of schedules, so we're trying to work towards that, just like Dr. Morse describes.
I just have a question in terms of pedagogically. Is there some advantage to teaching a foreign language so that it's not a day on and a day off? You know, I mean, when I was taught foreign language in university, it was like every day, and I think that sequence was really valuable. If you did hire the fifth grade teacher, would you have a more consistent, you know?
Well, I think that when we get to part B of Jay's master plan for the middle school, Tom, we're going to recommend we follow the high school A/B schedule, and he has to refine that to fit middle school. So the answer to your question is absolutely, if you meet with math every single day, it's better than meeting with every other day. But what we're seeing at the high school is we're seeing the performance of our students be pretty consistent, whether it's every day or every other day, because it's really about the teaching that goes on during that period. I have actually implemented a number of different versions of master schedules, block schedules, four-by-fours, ABs, and compare them data-wise against the traditional five periods every single day. There's really no performance difference.
So just to clarify, the A/B would just be for the fifth grade?
For, no, for grades five through eight. So it would be music, world language, block. We're currently doing that sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and we would add that with fifth grade as well. Music students currently have an A/B schedule, and we'd be adding world language into that for fifth graders.
So I guess when I'm looking at the numbers, like right now, the older students actually choose a language, correct? Because we have way more students taking, for example, Spanish than French or Mandarin. You know, I'm looking at these projected numbers. So I guess I'm, because you talked about it as a rotation with the three languages. And so I'm just trying to get a handle on at which point do students choose one language?
Right from the beginning. So typically when students start world language in sixth grade, they choose what language they want to learn. So this would be starting a year earlier in fifth grade. So that's why we would need a timeline in terms of meeting with the students, informing parents. So students can make informed choices with consulting with parents in terms of what language they would want to choose.
Okay, so they won't have that experience of trying out all three languages?
They will. So we would do that for maybe a week or a week and a half in terms of exposing all fifth graders to the three different language, languages, which we already do with sixth grade or historically have done with sixth grade. So they'll be exposed to all three languages. Again, information out to parents to make sure parents are aware of this is very essential.
And then after that brief exposure, they would pick one language and presumably stick with that one language?
Correct. And it's very rare, but of course we do let students make changes when it's appropriate if they'd like to make a change. We do the same thing in music.
Okay. How long are the world language periods today?
Currently they're 45 minutes. So what we're talking about is we like to expand those blocks to maybe an hour in the future. My schedule is so tight right now, we have so, I won't bore you with it, but you know, with music in the cafeteria and spaces and things like that. And you know, in February, at the very latest next year, we would like to expand those blocks to be longer blocks.
That still sounds like it's a considerable loss in world language time for the sixth through eighth grades.
It's about a third of the time, correct? If you're just counting seat time.
There's got to be some impact from.
I'm sorry.
There's got to be some impact, some adverse, you know, some negative impact to, you know.
My teachers feel confident that it's not going to have a negative impact on student learning. We've talked about that.
I think also, Michael, the important piece to remember is that the five through 12 program is all working in the same sequence. So for example, I'll just use my grandson. As a sophomore, he's in the fourth level of Spanish because the teachers are assessing where the kids are based on their performance. And so it's not the traditional one, two, three, four, everybody goes to one, everybody goes to two. And so because the five through 12 program is in sync and it's performance based, they're making decisions about students based on where they are as opposed to the grade they're in.
The length of time also, Jay and I have talked a lot about the length of time and the extension of that. So if you think of a middle school student moving through their schedule, one right after another, 45 minutes. By the time you actually have the students in their seat focused on their work, a 45 minute block is now probably whittled down to more like a 30 minute block if you're lucky. So by extending the time to a 60 minute block, you actually may, the faculty may notice, and this is something that we've talked about with the high school faculty. They're not, kids aren't moving so much. There's fewer transitions and there's more, more of a consistent focused time that students have in that content area. And so while you may be actually losing that seat time, you may actually be gaining instructional time because of the fewer transitions. So there's definitely trade offs between the two.
Particularly in the new school.
I wanted to thank you for continuing to wrestle with the scheduling. I know it's hard, always hard to think of how new things slot in. It is true that there is the loss of time on the calendar for six through eight. But if we're looking at the bigger picture where it's a five through 12 program now or a K through 12 program, the students are going to be getting much deeper and longer exposure towards, you know, towards proficiency by building this in. Fifth grade was always the, you know, the gap. We've talked about K four, we've talked about, you know, we brought it down to sixth grade and now it's through. So I feel great about that shift. It seems sustainable to have it opposite to the music and it provides this latching on point for the K four program that we're discussing.
So I guess, I think this is probably worth spending some more time on, but not tonight. And this is not, strategic planning is not about what we're doing in a few months. It's about what we're doing over the next three years. So this is probably not the right way to tackle this in its entirety. And I think there's a lot more details that we're not really prepared to work through tonight, Al.
Yeah, so I agree, actually. I think so, first of all, there's some tantalizing, you know, ideas going on, but there's, it's not, the ideas aren't fully completed. So by that I mean like when we look at the particularly elementary level, it's, there's like scheduling change. There's no clear direction, at least in here, exactly how much time you're changing the schedule, how that fits in the busing schedule and all that. So, you know, when I think about like trying to implement this in the next year, the things that need to be clarified, one, the schedule, can you pull it off? What does it look like? Do you have homes at the elementary? The second is of course money, coming up with the money for it. And then the third, and it's maybe the least important, is which language are you actually going to pick as the one that you're going to implement in the elementaries? And so no pressure, we have all the way till October, end of October, till we're actually doing some budgetary stuff. But I think the idea just needs to be refined a little bit and brought back to us.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you.
Would it be worthwhile, Jamie, you had mentioned that there wasn't a board ratified five-year outcome. Would it be helpful to solidify that, to formalize that?
Why don't, why don't we take the advice of the chair, come back with a more detailed plan? And we ultimately do need to determine where we're going. And so I did put the draft in there for you guys to consider, so.
That should also include kind of fleshing out what's happening in 2020, 2023 and 23, 24. I mean, this budget that I was talking about that we're going to be working on in detail over the next few months is the one that says to be determined.
Exactly. And the reason it says that is because I didn't have an outcome.
Right, right.
So once I have an outcome, I know how to fill in those blocks. And so that's why I was looking for guidance on the outcome. Okay? All right. Moving along. Suzanne?
Well.
Oh, Josh.
Before we, before we move on, where are we with regards to elementary side of that? Are we, you know, that's, that's, we've got middle school, world language to fifth grade. Consider hiring K four world language, each elementary school. Is there more, are there moving pieces there beyond what we've discussed in the spring?
I didn't do any more, Michael, because I, again, it's all based on the outcome the board decides. So how much work I put into each of those depends on where we're going as a system. So I didn't touch it yet. You got tons of time. You got two months. Well, believe me, I'll enjoy working on it.
Well, the elementary part's significant as well because we have a, you know, we have a bridge this year with, you know, local funding of the Mandarin program in the elementary level. That's not a, you know, that's not a long-term plan. That's a bridge. So there's some work to do there to figure out where that does go next year.
I mean, I think I'm optimistic because the way we're doing the strategic plan and the budgeting is lending itself that you've placed something in the strategic plan and now we get to problem solve how we make it work. And that's what I really hope we'll be doing. So it's good.
Thank you. All right, Josh.
Good evening, everyone. You have in your packets the backup for kind of the update on the technology strategic plan. I'm just going to go over some high level pieces. As you can imagine, with relying on technology for the pandemic, there was a lot that happened with technology. And it was, it was definitely an interesting time. I echo Dr. Morse. It was a busy time, a challenging time, but a lot of good things happened. So we really got a lot of time on PD and technology. There's a lot of training that had to happen. There's a lot of new apps we had to deploy. There's a lot of new things that we just had to learn across the district. Probably the biggest thing, and we had part of this in the plan. We had budgeted and planned to go one to one, the 10 through 12 last year. And not only did we do 10 through 12, we did K through four. We found laptops for paras and we replaced all the staff laptops. So it was a busy year. But again, it was a good thing. We got a lot accomplished. With, again, all these systems, we also worked on efficiencies using the programs and the software we have. We have so much data that we're now moving between systems. We really had to figure out efficient ways to do that and update things quickly as kids were transitioning in the classroom, out of the classroom. Device issues. It was really, it was busy. It was challenging, but it was exciting as well. And as we had to develop a lot of digital content, we also had to really learn a lot about accessibility and what does that look like? When it comes to, we're now doing lots of video. We're doing a lot more digital things and how does that work for our students with needs? So those are some of the big things that have really happened. And, you know, there's a couple of things that kind of got pushed aside. Not major things. We'll get back on track with them. But we had planned to do some infrastructure upgrades around servers and storage. It just didn't make sense to do that last year and the equipment is still running. It's just getting aged, so we'll move that into next year, hopefully. We also had planned to do some projector replacements across the district. They're starting to age and that was another item that during the pandemic and due to the chip shortage, we could not get. I'm still waiting on two projectors for May and no one can tell me when they're going to arrive. So as we talk about the next couple of years, I think chip shortages and probably an increase in cost on technology is something we are going to be seeing and reflected in the budget. And of course, there's a, with technology, it's never really done. You know, we get through, we get everything updated and then it changes. And so there's continued work. One of the not so great things that came out in the pandemic, K 12 was a huge target for cyber threats. And so we're going to continue our work and making sure that we're following best practices to secure student and staff data. We're also going to, related to that is student data privacy. New Hampshire has some very strict laws around that. We've done a ton of work around that. We're going to continue working on that. And then we're going to keep, keep going with the PD and the training on all these new tools that we used. We're still trying to keep everyone up to date on team. So, you know, if we have to do anything remote, we're still ready to go. And with the new middle school, there's, as that's getting closer to completion, there's a lot of details that are happening and a lot of pieces that need to come in and double checking to make sure everything comes into place. So spending a lot of time on that as well. And if you can believe this, it feels like it was not that long ago. We were having a conversation about one to one at the middle school. This is the fourth year of a four-year lease. So next budget cycle, we need to replace all those laptops that we bought that literally feels like it was not that long ago. But it has been four years at the end of the school year. So I really want to work with Jay and the tech integrators, teachers, and really kind of do a debrief on the last three years. Look at what changes need to be made, what are the things we need to be looking at going forward? And then some of you were on the committee, but communications website, that was another topic through the pandemic and even in prior years that we'll be continuing to work on. And then really just the pieces that have the most budgetary impact. I mentioned devices for the middle school. Like I said, I think the chip shortage is going to continue for a while. And so Dr. Morse and I have already started talking about what are the things we can do to get our orders in so at least we get in the pipeline for manufacturing. We have seen over the years, as we have been adding, the cost has been going up. I think originally when we did the middle school four years ago, we were around $400 a device. We had to buy, not in quantity, but some, I think we bought about 50 units in the spring and they were just under $450 a piece. So again, anticipate that to be there. I mentioned trying to get back on track with our server and storage upgrades. The equipment's running. It's, it's doing pretty well. It's just getting to the point where the manufacturers are charging us so much for support. And as technology increases, the energy efficiencies that increase, you know, we can take what is, you know, takes up half a rack and probably decrease that in half, reduce our energy usage. So just good things to do. So I plan on putting that in the budget. And then getting back on track with projectors, assuming that they have them. I think once we see what's going into the new middle school, we're going to want to start doing some upgrades throughout the district. And luckily, we've, we've been working with a good company for the new middle school and hopefully we can work with them for some of the other projects around the district. So that's, that's my update.
So speaking of the projectors and so with the old middle school, is the tech that's in there, like how much of it is going to be either, you know, transition to the new middle school or if it's not needed in the new middle school because the new middle school is already getting, you know, new devices or new whatever, will they be distributed like throughout the district?
Yeah, so everything that is in the new middle school will be replaced. I don't think we're bringing any technology over. The one thing we haven't talked about is copiers. But everything else, phones, network equipment, projectors, everything was included in the project. And so what my plan is, is the period of time that we have from when the building closes to when they start demolishing it, we'll go through and anything that we can reuse around the district, we'll grab and repurpose it. Some of it, you know, there is some stuff that's old enough that we haven't been replacing. So there probably will be some that needs to be recycled through some e-waste companies. But anything that is usable, we will try to reuse. I don't know off the top of my head how much, but that's the plan.
It'll be really interesting to hear the assessment, you know, having three years in change of experience, one to one at the middle school. What areas, what set of requirements about the laptop program were right on target? Were we surprised by that change as you work through that? That'll be really.
Yep, yeah. I think it's really important that we, you know, look back. I mean, the pandemic definitely threw kind of a, it threw us off track a bit. I think we, because the laptops were gone for so long, we might've seen a little more damage than we were experiencing previously. But overall, you know, the feedback that I've been getting from the staff that are dealing with it has all been very positive. I really don't think damage is a major issue. I think we had some manufacturer defects that are affecting us. But overall, it's, it's been going really well. But yeah, I think that's an important step to take before the next round.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I invite the principals up in terms of updates on the curriculum.
Hi, I'm, we're here to talk about the CBE piece of the strategic plan from the elementary level. This began prior to Misty's role at school. So I'll talk about what we did do at both buildings. You can see from your packet that last year we did not address this goal at all as we focused on all the work we were doing for half-day teaching, remote day teaching and everything in between. What we did accomplish in the year previous was the first piece of that strategic goal, which was to begin learning about competency-based education. We were already relooking in our science committee work at our units and we were looking at it from a competency-based perspective through the next generation science standards. So we began right there and that's what we were already doing, writing competencies for our science units through the next gen science standards. And then through that work, we were beginning to do the professional development and the education with our teaching staff at grade levels around competencies and how that would impact their teaching of science units. So our next goal, we're just pushing forward, which would be to continue that work, continue flushing out our science units, really understanding competency-based education at the elementary level and then continue on in the other years to move into ELA and math. Questions for the elementary piece? Thank you.
Again, Jay Rashard again, the middle school. And as you know, we have our habits of learning in place, our competency's been in place. We've really been trying to brand particularly our habits and habits of learning. If you have a fifth grader, they came home with new T-shirts. We actually put all of our habits of learning on the, on the back of the T-shirts that we give out to students. It's very popular. In the past year, in terms of our teachers collaborating, in terms of assessments that we want to measure in terms of how our students are doing with competencies. You know, you firmly use the term cultural collaboration. Our staff have done a great job of that and we're also going to. Our staff have done a great job of that and we're also going to continue to revisit in terms of educating parents in terms of how our progress reporting system, as you all know, Schoology was something brand new and we need to do, you know, a good job in terms of educating parents on what that looks like. Any questions?
So whatever happened long, before the pandemic, we were going to do like kind of a run-through of how the competency-based reporting system was working. And we kind of got knocked off track with COVID, so where are we in terms of that?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't talked about that. I mean, I, I received a lot of positive feedback from parents, particularly during the pandemic in terms of having competencies in place in terms of so parents could see and students could focus on, you know, what are the core things that we want students to be able to learn and be able to do. Again, I just talked to Al about in terms of educating parents, in terms of how Schoology works and how progress reporting is done in Schoology with our competencies. So that, that's where we're at.
This predated me, so this may be a basic question. I'm looking ahead to the high school piece and Al, as you were saying, in '21, '22, this goal was set pre-COVID, but in-depth discussions with the board about the CBE work. What happens at the middle school or elementary school level? Does your direction then come based on the high school decision and the high school assessment of competency-based education and CBE?
I think this has been a long process. Those who have been here for a while know that these were, you know, a lot of thoughtful discussions with my teachers and the, and the school board in terms of where we're at right now.
So I would say, I would say...
Sorry, you know, put me on the spot.
No, I think it's a good question, UC. And so the way the process started, it started in the middle and then gravitated to the high school and the elementary. And so the high school defined their competencies. The next step is again, bringing the two units together to make sure that there's a longitudinal compliance to what we're doing at the middle school and high school. And we have the perfect assistant superintendent to do that work.
I agree.
Good evening. So I am actually getting to know the different strategic plan and components of that. So I've talked to some parents, I've talked to some teachers, I've talked to Suzanne and Dr. Morse, just about a little of the history of competencies at the high school. And so there are competencies in place for every class. And so what I'm looking forward to is reinvigorating those conversations to see where the district and the board would like to go. Thank you.
And then Michael's, just going on to the Barrington meeting report that's in your folder. Tom and Michael attended those meetings with me. I would describe it as tough conversation on the front end with great, I think great outcomes in terms of expectations. So Barrington felt that they had not been communicated effectively regarding the high school issues. So we came up with five outcomes. One is that Barrington will provide us, our high school, with a template related to how they would like their information reported to them. And they suggested that Co-Brown had a template that they'd share with, with us and we certainly would provide that information in any format that they wish. That, the second one is that we would provide the Barrington School Board the complete packet that you all get, minus personnel issues, of course, so they could see what's coming up on the agenda. And if there's something on the agenda, we would reserve a seat at this table for Barrington member to come at, at any point they wish. The agreement does allow for a Barrington member to sit here, week in and week out with all of you, but they also have responsibilities to their own school board. And even though that exists in the contract, I think it's a big ask to ask a Barrington member to do their board meetings and then attend all of ours. So the compromise that we came to is we'll send them the agenda. If a Barrington member wants to be part of a discussion, then they can come and sit with us and have that discussion. Do you want me to go through all of them before you give a question?
However you feel comfortable.
Let me just go through them and then I'll come back. Okay. The, the other thing that came up was that Barrington would form a high school tuition committee and invite Dover and, and us and theoretically Co-Brown to the table to see how the high school program is working. Olivia would be a great person to give that since she's from Barrington and could, could give them a student's perspective, but the reality is, I think, that Barrington felt like it would be important to have a regional discussion because the Barrington children have, you know, the choice of us, Co-Brown, or Dover. And then the other piece is just in terms of any specific information that they wish, we asked them to run it through their superintendent, currently Dan Wallace. He would run it through me and I would produce whatever information that they felt they needed at any given point in time. So I think we came up with, you know, pretty decent outcomes and I think that these five outcomes are relatively easy for me to, to do. And so I thought the meeting was a good meeting. Michael or Tom, did you want to add anything?
Something that, that you put together, the team put together that we shared with the Barrington and Dover folks that were there, you know, we don't, we don't look at the student body at the high school based on which town students come from, ever, really. And so we'd never looked at, you know, participation rates, test scores, and so on and so forth by students that are from Oyster River, from Barrington, from the towns within Oyster River. And so, so broke that out just to see if there is any sort of disparity there. And there really, there really isn't. The numbers are remarkably representative across the board with the different, different indicators that, that you looked at. In fact, that's probably something worth circulating to the full board.
Well, Olivia's years were probably burning through these conversations. Our student rep is from Barrington. This is the first. You know, we've had salutatorians and valedictorians coming from the town. We've had some of our highest SAT scores in any given year. So it, it just floats through the four towns kind of transparently. And for us as a school district, we don't separate it up by towns because it's counterproductive for us to do that. We want to see how we're doing as Oyster River High School, not how we're doing as, as three-member towns. But for a tuition-paying town, I think it's important data that they felt like they needed and needed to validate that they were, for lack of a better phrase, getting their money's worth.
Well, and at the same time, I appreciate anticipatory, appreciate the type of input that we'll receive from the Barrington board. I mean, they have a different perspective because they see what's going on in not just Oyster River, but other, other districts as well. So there's, there's value for us in that, in that as well. Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on actually the next to last paragraph about the, because at the very, almost at the very end of the meeting, the superintendent from Dover brought up the issue, which I thought was really the reason why we were supposed to be at this, you know, have this meeting, which was that they, that Barrington has made a request for tuition rebate and it's involved, caused us to hire a lawyer. It's called Dover Hire, I mean, we're the same legal firm, but to incur fairly substantial legal expenses already. And so at the very end of the meeting, the superintendent from Dover says, are you prepared to, to drop this request? And they said, well, we're going to take it back to the board, the Dover, the Barrington board to see if they're going to continue this request. If they do continue the request, my understanding is then you go to mediation, which involves more legal expenses for, for all the parties. So you're, you're kind of in this tangle. So I hope that, and I don't know if we can ask, my understanding is the next Barrington meeting is on the 7th and their agenda comes out, will come out this Friday. I'd like to know personally if this is going to be on the agenda for them to make this decision, because I think we really need to get off the schneid and not, you know, and work collaboratively, get, you know, get out of this kind of legal tangle that we're in, because it's very expensive and I think more than that, I think it's destructive in terms of the goodwill if we're, we're kind of in this legal situation.
Thanks, Tom. Al?
So mine was only with, just to clarify, point three, where the Barrington board wishes to participate in the meeting. It should be, that the subject is in regard to the high school. So in other words, if something comes up at the elementary with one-on-one technology at the elementary, Barrington doesn't have tuition students in here, so it's only, only agenda items that we, that we'd want their participation would be directly dealing with the high school.
I have a question beyond Barrington, but directed to the superintendent.
Anything else on this?
I wanted to follow up on the, the deficit of 11 paraprofessionals. And I hadn't learned about that gap until after the last meeting and it's, it's striking, you know, the, the 10 missing bus drivers affect the, it's more visible across the district, but the missing paraprofessionals have much deeper impact on the smaller number of students that, that use them. So I want to be sure that they don't become, you know, less visible because it's super important.
I can guarantee you they're not less visible from the emails I get from Rebecca, from Melissa Jean, and from Catherine. They're, they're on it and we had some short-term suggestions later when we're in non-meeting and some long-term ones.
Do you want to give the community hiring blurb the way Lisa did for the bus driver?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Thank you. That's it, Michael, for me.
All right. Sue?
Good evening. So at the last board meeting, I gave you a summary of the general fund expenses for the year. We had our audit last week and the two reports for the state are due today. The DOE 25, that's a 26-page report, includes all funds, the general fund, the grant funds, food service, construction fund. That goes to Department of Education. The MS-25, that's a five-page summary report, that goes to the Department of Revenue to set tax rate. So at the last meeting, I announced that we were at $1.3 million before any adjustments were made. We had $267,000 approximately of encumbered things that you had approved that hadn't been finished before the end of the year. We had $125,000 to go to the trust fund. So that leaves us with a fund balance of $1,015,867. So when we set our budget, we talked about what we would have. We thought we'd have 400. We were going to use 500 from the emergency fund, 900. So we won't have to touch our emergency funds. We'll have this amount, a little extra to offset the rates, because remember, we have a significant impact to Lee and Madbury because of their loss of adequacy funds. So this will help offset that a little bit and that's basically it.
It's actually had a pretty significant impact on Lee and Madbury and we haven't got the new appraisals yet, so there's still going to be an impact that will reduce the taxes in both of those towns. And I've set up, I've asked Wendy to set up meetings with the three towns over the course of October, November, because we always do two meetings. One is to give them an update from the, from the superintendent related to how the school system is doing. And then the second one is related to budget issues. So I try to do two because I don't always want to be in the towns with my hand out. I'd like to give them good news about how we're doing and then tax news in the second part of the year. So we're in the process of doing that. We'll make sure each of you know when I'm in a particular town, so if you want to join that meeting, you're more than welcome to. Brian faithfully is there and actually comes up, last time he came up to the podium and talked about the middle school and it was pretty cool. I think that the towns really respect you guys being there and offering your thoughts about how things are going in addition to me, so we'll make sure you're informed.
So I need a motion to sign the report?
And just to clarify, the motion is to sign the MS-25 and the DOE 25. It's not for me to sign them. There are blanks for all of, it's, it's a group thing, so it's not...
Is it in a certain spot again?
Yes, your name is typed on those forms. Michael has those.
Isn't Al the one that always missigns on the...
I was going to say, this is like that task to read the instructions.
Like I'm making motion to authorize the school board to sign the DOE 25 and MS-25.
Motion from Brian.
Al's second.
Second from Denise. Any discussion? Call in favor?
Thank you.
Seven in favor, the student rep in favor.
Was that your first recorded vote, Olivia?
No, we have the agenda.
Oh, yeah. The whole night's been full of all these votes that you've been making. The power, right?
So I will sign these and we will pass them around. I will find the correct line to sign these. And then while I'm doing that, Al, oh, no, I'm sorry, Olivia, we're up to the student representative report.
Okay. So I just kind of wanted to go over like the last, like few first days of school to give you an idea of how it's been going on a student's end. And from all the people that I've talked with, like all different grades, so keep that in mind, they have all said that like the sense of normalcy that within the school board, I mean, within the school has brought like a wave of like motivation and excitement because like seeing all people face-to-face for a first time, like for some students is like super exciting. And the like amount of like engagement within classes, like even though we've barely had any classes, like I think I've heard kids talk more than the past, like, I don't know, few months of remote learning, like, you know? So I think it's definitely all positive things I'm hearing. I haven't really heard too many negative things from the people that I'm talking with, so I think it's all going pretty well so far.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I just, point of clarification, are we just signing the second page or are we signing on the cover sheet, like by...
So that is the cover sheet, one of those is the cover sheet for the MS-25 and the other one is the cover sheet for the DOE 25.
Okay, so we are signing both. Okay, thank you.
Please sign, one's on each page.
I wonder if we could put Olivia on the spot just for a minute to, you know, to introduce yourself. What are the, what drew you to Oyster River? What are some of the things you're involved in?
So obviously, I'm the school board representative for the students. I, I'm a student athlete here at Oyster River. I play soccer and I also ski race. I'm a member of NHS. I'm also the president currently, so that's exciting too. I don't know, I love being involved with my school and being a voice for my peers is something I really enjoy. I love being a leader. That's my favorite thing.
Excellent. Thank you. Finance meeting?
So we were originally going to have our next finance committee meeting September 21st. We've pushed it up to next week, the 7th. Just, we wanted to get actually started on the, the budget goal and I think we have some numbers to work with now. And the other thing about that is I'll be, it'll give me a chance to do the write-up and have it in the packet before the next meeting, because the next meeting will have finished all the strategic planning and you'll get at least what our initial thoughts were in terms of, of beginning to formulate a budget goal.
Thank you, Al. Unanimous consent agenda. So I will move the unanimous consent agenda, including affirming the hiring of two teachers at Moheramit kindergarten teacher and Oyster River High School Chinese teacher, and to approve the middle school fall coaches for the 2021-22 school year. Brian, second from Brian. I should have asked if anybody wanted to separate any of those. All in favor? Seven in favor, student rep in favor. Those are approved.
Oh, Michael?
Yes.
Can we add to the affirmation, the hiring of Bob Petrick as a kindergarten teacher at the Moheramit School as well?
Yeah, yeah. So in your, in your blue folder, there is an additional teacher nomination. I didn't want to include that unanimous consent agenda because I don't want to include things that weren't in the packet ahead of time there, but we can, we can take that one up as well. So I'll move, I'll move the approval of, now, is this, is this an affirmation or is this a pending?
Still an affirmation. After tonight, there'll be nominations.
Right, okay. So I'll move to approve the affirmation of hiring Robert Petrick as a kindergarten teacher for a one-year leave of absence at Moheramit.
Second.
Second from UC. Discussion? Call in favor? Seven in favor, student rep in favor. That's approved also. All right. That brings us to the discussion and action items. So I want to apologize, Brian had brought up the, the topic of pledge of allegiance at school board meetings a number of months ago, along with a couple of other things. We dealt with other things that were time pressing and this one kind of fell off my radar, so Brian brought this up again and so it's on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. A while back, I requested to get on the, the agenda and obviously things just got real busy, so, but I wanted to bring, talk about bringing back the pledge of allegiance to our school board meetings. We do it at our deliberative session. We do it at our deliberative session. We do it at a lot of other meetings. I know the schools are probably doing it. But I know it was taken away before my time, so it was at least four years ago when that happened. And I've heard rumors of why it was. I don't want to confirm or deny those because I don't know. But I think it's time to start bringing it back. I think it's an important part of the process, of the political process of being on a school board. I'm part of several of the boards where we do the pledge of allegiance before every meeting, whether it's a selectmen's meeting, a budget committee meeting, or a school board meeting. Especially at a time when there's a lot of divisiveness in this country. I think one thing we can come together with is, is that we're all, we're all Americans. You know, we all believe in what this country stands for. We may not agree with 100% of it, but we agree with it for the most part. And it is an optional thing, so if you don't like it, you can, you know, not participate. But I'd like to at least bring it back to our board meetings because I think it is, it is important.
Discussion?
I could just give some context of kind of how it happened. I was the chair at the time.
Yeah, please.
Actually, I think Maria was.
And I think, and I checked, you know, whether it was always a part of a board meeting. And for a long time, you know, going back before the bracket board, it wasn't. The bracket board initiated it. Maria Barth, I think, brought it, she objected strongly to having it as a required part of our board meeting. And so that led to the discussion. And as part of the discussion, I looked up, and I don't know whether you consider this relevant, but every board member does take an oath. It's not the pledge of allegiance, but when you're, when you're brought onto the board, you take an oath, it's required by the state. And I have that because it is, it is, you know, whether this is adequate, whether we should have the pledge of allegiance in addition to this. But the oath that the board members take is actually two parts. "I do solemnly swear that I have bare faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and the State of New Hampshire, and will support the constitutions thereof so help me God. And I do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as school board member according to the best of my abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of this constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help me God." So there is a, there is an oath that we all take. Now, whether that's adequate, whether it's, should have this plus the pledge of allegiance, but that was something I also brought up in the meeting. We voted, I think it was six to one, to not have the pledge of allegiance as part of it. So that was, that's how it happened.
So actually, I was the one vote who said, I was the one vote who said that we should keep it. But, but again, so when it came up, Maria brought it up, and of course, there's lots of legal information on it, but it was, the thing that she's strongly opposed to is one nation under God, which came up, which is offensive to anyone who's an atheist. And so that brought us then to a conversation in New Hampshire, by the way, students, in New Hampshire is one of the states that at least giving the time for the pledge of allegiance is required. There's only like four states, I believe, Vermont is one of them that opted out. And so you're not required to do it, but there has to be time there. And the reason I voted to keep it, I felt kind of, at that point, I was like, wow, this is really, we're able to get around doing the pledge of allegiance and the students have to do it. So I felt kind of like, if they have to do it, we have to do it. But over the, whatever this was, it was a long time ago. This is at least probably eight years ago that we did this. My thinking has really changed about it. I think in terms of the school board, and the same is true actually with the Durham Town Government, we don't do the pledge of allegiance. I think while we do adhere to national and federal laws, I think the focus of the school board and also at least the town government is, is local issues and local control. And so my thinking now is that that's, that's really where our focus should be in the meeting. And I would prefer, you know, as I said, I was the one lone vote eight years ago, but I, I think that, that we don't really need to do the pledge of allegiance. I think locally, and it's not that I'm anti-American by saying it, I think what our pledge really is, is to our local community to be transparent, to deal with their issues, and try to do the best we can to build the foundation of our school system.
I appreciate your bringing this up, and I'd be interested in what different community members think also, you know, just recognizing that this is where we've been elected as decision makers. But it's such a, you know, we're in these evolving times, and I hear you about having things that unite us. I did see a guy on a Harley over the weekend, and a big American flag and a big Black Lives Matter flag, and they were billowing behind him. And I just thought it was so fantastic to be able to say both of these things are true. You know, you see sort of competing yard signs, and both the yard signs are true, but you very rarely ever see them in the same yard. And I also heard the scarf spangled banner actually at the football jamboree, so thank you for that. And I agree with you that the, like, the flag itself and the, to me, is rousing, but it's the under God part and sort of the, the connection to sort of, to other links or assumptions for that, that it seemed less obvious to me that we would have the pledge of allegiance at a, at a local school board meeting. So have your thoughts?
You know what the good part is, though? If you don't want to say under God, you don't have to.
True.
Because every single one of us stood up at the deliberative session and did the pledge of allegiance. Granted, that's the moderator's responsibility to do that, but every single one of you stood up, every single one of you pledged allegiance to the flag. I didn't see anybody getting offended over it. So to get, this seems regularly, people get offended over the American flag that gives us the freedoms and everything else that we belong to, whether you agree to it or not. Doesn't matter. I don't agree 100% what's going on in this country. I mean, it's a few 100% that goes on in Washington DC most of the time, for, no matter what sign you're on. But, you know, to find the flag that flies over your country every day, whether it's a police department, a fire department, your town hall, and we can't do the basic pledge of allegiance that our children do all the time, it's disappointing. I'll be honest with you, it's disappointing. It worries them to me, that the direction that this, that we're going, so.
I think part of it, you know, for me is, we're, as a district, you know, we're, we're saying we want to be as inclusive as possible. And the fact that for some people, the pledge, you know, obviously Maria felt extreme, really strongly about it. I'm sure there's others who feel strongly about it. I hear what you're saying, Brian. I wasn't one of the ones that was strong on either side all those years ago. And I'm still, I don't think strong, have strong feelings about it, but I do lean more towards, you know, we're trying to be as inclusive as possible in this district and to sort of, what's, what's the word, you know, just have that be part of our meeting. You know, are we in fact, to some people, you know, who see this, and particularly perhaps the under God part, maybe the troublesome part, or maybe just because of everything that's happening in our country? So I guess that's the part that concerns me.
What about the people that are, feel strongly for it? I mean, you can sit down and not do the pledge of allegiance if you choose to. So if you want to be inclusive, you're not including what I think. You're basically worried about everybody else, you know, because you're going to offend a few, let's not do it at all.
Except it's, it's a move towards adding it. It's a change where we already have the flag at our meetings, where we already have the oath set that Tom has, has mentioned. So it's, you know, it's already baked in.
No, no, that's not fine. It's me. So.
So just briefly, I'll add, I appreciate the discussion because this is something that, you know, is overlooked. I was also not a part of the board when the decision was made to suspend the practice. Number one, I'm not someone who subscribes to the idea that there is always a best way to honor or celebrate something we value. And thinking about the oath, it is, you know, I think the sticking point is the under God piece, right? So it is, it is to me something that is not consistent in the sense that it is not as inclusive, it is more exclusive in terms of focusing on a particular belief system. So, you know, like our discussion around how we should think really carefully about naming buildings or, you know, honoring people that we hold in high regard, high esteem, while that's not, while that's a good, inherently a good thing to, you know, the point's been made, you know, we're sending a message with things we do. And so I'm, I'm not, at this, at this point, I don't know enough, I don't, I haven't heard enough from the community to know that we would be sending the message we think we're sending, right? And I would worry that we're sending a message that's inconsistent with some of the work that we've done over the past number of years. So I'd like to learn more about it. You know, I'm not anti-pledge of allegiance. I just think we should think really carefully about things we incorporate as part of our routine and the message that we're sending. Is it the message we think we're sending? Or are we sending messages we hadn't considered? Are we sending mixed messages? Those are the things I think we need to think really long and hard about.
That's a very, I think, I think you captured a lot of it really well, Dan. It's, that's an interesting part about this, this conversation is that the flag is a symbol clearly does not mean the same thing to every, every person that displays it, that wears it, that pledges allegiance to it. The person that UC saw this weekend with the Harley and the Black Lives Matter flag and the American flag probably wasn't approaching it the same way as those that carried US flags into the Capitol on January 6th in rebellion, in insurrection. So that's where this becomes tricky, right? If I stand up and pledge allegiance to the flag, I know what that means. But like Dan said, what, what does that mean, you know, broadly? And I don't, I don't know the answer. I feel a lot about, you know, not so much the flag, but the country, the same way I feel about my own kids sometimes, right? I love America. I love my kids. Sometimes my kids do things that really frustrate me and drive me even close to the point of madness. Sometimes our country does things that really frustrate me and drive me close to the point of madness. So, you know, and that's, but that's what's constructive and good about it, and probably, I guess, makes me lean towards the side of yes, that that is what characterizes the United States. That is what we are. We are a mishmash of everything.
Would you, would you all be open to a survey being sent out, a simple two-question survey? Do you think, why not?
I just, the beginning of the year, we have so much else on our plate.
You know what? We've sent thousands of surveys out over the last month, over the last year with COVID. That's not, I'm not, that's not flying with me. Because we've sent all these surveys out, you get the results back and you don't listen to them. So if we send one, two-person, two-question survey out there that says, do you think it should be part of a school board meeting, yes or no? I don't think that's too much. That's about the easiest survey we've ever sent out. And it's one we can actually utilize because we haven't utilized most of the other surveys we have.
I guess, will that, will that though, that feels divisive to me. I know, and the objective, we're saying the objective is to bring people together.
But here's the issue, though. I want to hear what everybody wants to say, but they don't go out and talk to them. That's what everyone, that's what I'm hearing here. Everybody wants to go out and hear what everyone's thoughts are on it, but they don't go out and talk to anybody. They want them to come to them. Quickest way to do that is a very simple two-question survey. Let's see how the people think. That's who put us here, the people. I go out and talk to people all the time. In between meetings, I'm talking to people probably more than anybody. I actually go out and get the sense of the pulse of the public that's out there. I can pretty much guarantee most of you are.
I'd be careful with that, but.
I'm very confident in that.
I think I get a pretty good, since I serve on both town council and school board, I get a pretty good feeling.
That's still insulated to an extent.
But what I took back to, you know, when we began this meeting, and particularly when Jim talked about like the growth of the high school and talked about how it's coming from all over the world, we're bringing people in. I think, you know, it wasn't one nation under God was not brought into like 1948, it was brought in by Christians. And it's like, as, you know, the United States becomes more diversified and we begin to look at other religions that are here, I have a problem with that. You know, personally as an atheist, I don't like to have to say it. So it's like, I think we should be, I think Dan is correct. We need to be more respectful. If we're going to say that we're inclusive and we're going to do a lot of work with equity and inclusion, I think that we need to be mindful of that, of the different groups that are coming in, many who may not be Christian, and that we're sensitive to that. So it's not that we're anti-American. Actually, the census has shown that we've actually become more diverse over the last 10 years. So let's, let's embrace our diversity. I don't think, you know, taking one idea that may not be representative of everybody is a good idea, personally.
Does everybody here use any type of American currency? Y'all do, right? You have a red one on the currency?
So because we don't have a choice, we should, I guess, you're losing me, Brian.
Well, you know what? It says in God, we trust you. We stop using currency. That's what you're all saying because of, because the word God is on it.
That's, that is a, you're taking this and going in completely different, that's a logical fallacy. That's, that's.
You're all, you're trying to take a small percentage of people. This country was built as a melting pot. Okay, we had nobody here besides Native Americans. Then everybody started coming in, under that flag. So how is it, how is it, how, how are you saying it's divisive? If you don't want to do the pledge of allegiance, then don't do it. Sit down. I, I won't take offense to that. You know, if you don't like it, but it's part of the American.
What I said is divisive is pulling the community and asking the community to essentially vote yes or no on the pledge of allegiance. I don't think that is bringing people together.
Don't they vote every March on our budget and for us and for everybody else?
On, on, on matters of the district operation? Absolutely.
Yeah, and that's what this is. This is district operations, what we do as a school board. We're a governing body. We're a political governing body.
That is true. Yep.
So I'd like to say, you know, if someone wants to bring a motion, otherwise I think we should move on.
I make a motion to bring back the pledge of allegiance to the school board meetings.
We have a motion from Brian. There is no second.
Very disappointing.
However, if folks would like to write in who are watching, just expressing their views on this conversation, I personally would be interested.
So at the last meeting, we asked Tom to draft a board resolution about the teaching of race. You have a copy of that and a hard copy in your blue folder. This, I think what we're looking for here is some discussion.
Yes, you could have treated it as a first read.
Yeah.
You know, and so open to suggestions, suggestive changes. Just, just before I start, I'm going to read the whole thing to some people who don't have a copy. But I tried to make it affirmative and positive and not, you know, negative or, you know, even critical of the law itself. So I'll read, read what I wrote and then we just open it up for, for, you know, suggestions for changes. Then I thought what I might do is bring it back, as we do with policy, bring it back a second to another meeting and then have a vote on it in a subsequent meeting. Okay? "On June 25th, 2021, HB2 was signed into law. Initial drafts of the bill included the controversial prohibition for teaching divisive concepts, but this was removed from the final bill, which focused on discrimination," should be discrimination, "against identified groups as summarized in an FAQ issued by the New Hampshire Department of Education, the Commission for Human Rights, and the Department of Justice. And public employers and government programs are prohibited from training and advocating that one identified group, in parentheses, a group-based, deplored age, sex, gender, identity, sexual orientation, race, creed, color, marital status, familial status, mental or physical disability, religion, or national origin, is inherently superior or inferior to people of another identified group, is inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously, should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment, or cannot or should not attempt to treat members of other identified groups equally and/or without regard to their identified characteristic. The board finds nothing in HB2 or this clarification that contradicts our own robust policies dealing with inclusion, diversity, and anti-racism. However, we are concerned that the prospect of civil suits and disciplinary sanctions from the state may have a chilling from the state may have a chilling effect on our efforts to create an inclusive curriculum which honestly addresses issues of race, of bias and race. In response to HB2, the Board, and the three bullets, affirms its confidence that our teaching staff will continue to open up the curriculum to diverse perspectives and, in developmentally appropriate ways, celebrate the advances our country has made and confront the harms of discrimination, past and present. Second bullet, we'll seek to create forums for teachers to inform parents and the wider community about how our curriculum is evolving to be more inclusive. And the third bullet, we'll support any teacher working within our own guidelines who is subjected to the penalties or legal exposure made possible by this bill. Okay? So that's what I wrote, so open to suggestions. Yuzi?
Thank you, Tom, for drafting this, for having the initial idea and putting it into wording. I had two very small wording changes, but then hope that Dr. Morse also could elaborate on sort of what it means to support a teacher who is subjected to the penalties or legal exposure. The first is in the first bullet point, to confront the harms of discrimination, add the words, and discriminatory systems. I think it's important to talk about systems because it's easy to default to individual bias or action, whereas my sense is this board would, is thinking also about systems such as redlining or laws and institutional practices that go beyond individuals, and it would be helpful to clarify that. In the second bullet, replace the word forums with opportunities, so that it reads, we'll seek to create opportunities for teachers to inform parents, that widens our options for the particular format. And then, Dr. Morse, what, in your mind, could you be a bit more specific on what we might expect to see?
So if a teacher is working within our policies, what this resolution would say is that we would support them through the process of the challenges either at the Department of Education or through the courts, Superior Court, or through the Human Rights Commission. I have an obligation under this law to do an investigation, which I certainly will do, and I would apply our policies against whatever action is being challenged. Basically, this says, you know, that we would support our teachers through that process. I also will tell you something that's pretty radical for a superintendent to say, I encouraged every staff member on the opening day to join their union because, quite frankly, the union will also protect members. I know that's a strange thing for management to say, but when a law is passed that threatens people's livelihoods, the teachers need to make sure that they have the backing of organized labor to protect them as well as the district. And I would say that without any reservation, that our teachers and our support staff, based on the language of this law, need to make sure they have every protection. I think it's incredibly honorable of this board to move forward with a resolution like this that says if our teachers are complying with our policies and procedures and, in our estimation, are not violating this law, that we would protect them through the legal process.
Yuzi, we did pose this question to our lawyer, you know, could we use our, you know, our own funds to, for legal support for teachers? And her answer is yes, and she said that most likely if there would be a civil suit, we would be named in, the board would be named in it anyways, or not the board, the district. Because obviously somebody has a civil suit, they're going to want to have some monetary reward and, you know, the district would have more money than an individual teacher. So she thinks that probably, we'd probably be involved anyways, but legally, we can provide legal help to a teacher who's, you know.
I also think this speaks to the importance of getting the letter that I wrote out to the community next week because there's a lot of misconceptions about this new law, what it is and what it isn't. And I think people want it to be something on one side of the equation, people want it to be something else on the other side of the equation, largely because the law itself is incredibly vague and open to interpretation. So I think that the fact that we have very clear policy on anti-racism and we have a very clear program that we've been putting in place for over five years supports a resolution like this. And, you know, quite frankly, we've been doing terrific work across the district now for almost a half dozen years, and the threat of loss of licensure in this legislation is really what makes it onerous. That's never happened in the history of the state before. No public employee's job has been threatened by passage of any legislation, and that's really the heart of this issue, to teach an accurate history of the United States and then have somebody be able to say, you know, that's divisive. It doesn't make any difference whether it's true or not because the law allows somebody to make that statement. And so, you know, having the support of this body is going to make teachers feel like this body is incredibly supportive of the work they've been doing.
Denise? Thank you, Tom, I really appreciate your work on this. I was wondering if we should just strike out the part about initial drafts of the bill including controversial prohibiting for teaching divisive concepts, like, and just say, you know, was signed into law and, oh, start off with, which focused on discrimination against. I just wonder if it's a little bit, to start off and say, well, this was removed from the bill, like, I would just strike out and just pick it up from where it says, from the front of the, which focused on, like, you know, was signed into law and focused on, or something like that.
Well, I just think there's such a misconception about what's in the bill, and people still call it the divisive concepts bill, but it's not, it's not, it's like, and so I just think that's, there's a clarity that that, you know, that basically, it's like a series of anti-discrimination statements, some of which are really murky, the last one I think is really murky. But what they did was they stripped out a lot of the most egregious kind of statements from the bill, including divisive concepts, you know, and a lot of better states kept those in. My sense is maybe they did it because they, I don't know why they did, so.
I had the same generally thought as Denise, thank you, by the way, this is excellent. I think it's a little confusing maybe to someone who's not as familiar as we are, having followed the process through the legislature. I think it's worth identifying, you know, the bill known as or commonly referred to as, to take Tom's point, and that's why I thought perhaps you had structured it this way, because it's commonly known under those terms. However, I really think the statement should focus on the bill as it was passed and highlight the impacts to the district and the role we see ourselves playing in addressing anything.
Okay. Yeah, I would take a different perspective. I think having this piece actually will be helpful if a staff member of the district is challenged because the misunderstanding across the state is that the divisive concepts piece is still there, and it's not. And I think that Tom alluding to that history actually helps, will help me in saying to, you know, a potential person who's complaining, well, that part of the law doesn't exist, this is what we're actually doing, and the resolution I could refer to saying, yeah, it was there originally, but it's not there now. So I was thinking of it in terms of how it would help me in the conversation.
But, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, I'm coming back to the last one, which will support the teachers, and, you know, again, it is kind of weird because I've sat on the other side of the table for three guild contracts, but in terms of, and Jim answered my question, which is that it is really, really a good idea for teachers to join the guild, not just for the defense you may have to go for for the state, but you're going to want representation when Jim investigates you. And I think that's, and I do trust Jim quite a bit, but it's to your advantage to have representation through the entire process. I can't stress that strong enough, that really, really, it's to the best advantage of the, to all teachers to have representation. Your alternative is you're going to have to go hire your own lawyer to work your way through it. So it's to your advantage.
And also, the ACLU would also be a source for support because they're probably looking to defend people, you know.
But I mean, even before we got to the state, they're going to have to go through a hearing, and you're going to want some representation sitting in that hearing with you.
Denise?
So I would just suggest, I hear what you're saying, Jim, and maybe just breaking that up into two sentences so that it's not just one long, you know, so that might just clarify things a little bit. So, you know, something about, you know, teaching, it was initially brought up as divisive concept, however, the bill now, blah, 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 something just to kind of break up the sentence a little bit.
There's one more thing to consider, I'm not sure which way I follow on this, but another way of strengthening what we can sort of widen awareness of what is legal and possible would be in the paragraph, the Board finds nothing in HB2, to add a second sentence that says, in fact, controversial topics such as implicit bias or, you know, were expressly stated in the FAQ as legal. So to take one of the pieces in the FAQ document that actually expressly states topics that might have been considered divisive concepts but that are okay under HB2, stick that in there, and then start the next sentence as nevertheless, instead of however. So that's something to consider.
So do we want to vote on this as a draft, or would we want to ask Tom to go back and refine and just take this up as a single item at the next meeting?
I would say that.
Okay.
Just come back?
Yeah, we'll bring it back as a single item at the next meeting.
I'll think about it, and if, you know, if I were to push against someone, I'll kind of have some reasons why I want to do that.
Okay. All right, so we're at nine o'clock. I want to take a quick survey of the board. Are there going to be committee updates tonight? If not, I'm going to say, let's go ahead and press forward to the end of the agenda because I think the last couple items are not particularly long. Possible public hearing for policy BE DH. So I put this on here because we talked about some of my proposals for changes to the public participation policy at the last meeting. Making changes to that policy does require a public hearing. The policy committee has not met yet, so I'm kind of putting the policy committee on the spot here to say, are we going to be ready for that kind of public hearing at the September 15th meeting, or do we need to plan for that further out?
I think we need to wait before we say we are ready for a public hearing. We haven't even met to discuss where it's going to go yet.
I'm just trying to keep this when moving forward. Can we go ahead and schedule a public hearing for October 6th?
Yes, I would think that would be reasonable.
So I would invite a motion to schedule a public hearing on October 6th for the purposes of consideration of changes to policy BE DH, public participation at a board meeting.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, so a motion from Denise, is there a second? Dan, a second from Dan, any discussion on that? All those in favor? Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, we will have a public hearing on October 6th. All right, and then the last item on here, brainstorm ways the board can interact with the public. This is really, this is really going back to the discussion that we had in the spring about community forums. We had one community forum, we talked about having an additional, in person in the auditorium, we talked about having an additional online forum that did not, we did not schedule over the course of the summer for those that did not come to the in-person forum. We also talked about doing a forum with staff, which, after discussion with staff, we decided not to do it at the very tail end of the school year and wait till this fall. So the question here really is, how do we want to go forward with those kind of interactions? There's also, you know, those things are time consuming, they take time to publicize, they take time in the evenings for everybody that participates in them, and there are other, you know, now that we're back in the full swing of the school year, lots of other competing evening things going on. So that's what this is all about on the agenda night to get our, where we kind of take our temperature on this for now.
Any thoughts on having a board member or two at each open house to maybe answer questions for people? Just be at a stationary place so they know where to find you, you know, rather than moving around and trying to avoid people, but, you know, I mean, if it's enough, you could post it as a meeting, you know, or non-meeting. But I know I've seen that happen in the past and it's been pretty successful, actually.
I would be willing to do that, and if it's less than half of them, if it's not a forum, then it's.
Yeah, and you can each take a, you split it up, you know, because you have four schools, seven members, so, you know, maybe two each.
As far as the larger forums or events go, my opinion is that when you have a specific topic, it's easier to get people out and to have a productive meeting. So I'd be open to, you know, discussing otherwise, but I know that two particular topics that we're looking for to do in the fall anyway, certainly one is the opportunities that Tom just mentioned, to discuss our diversity, equity, inclusion, anti-racism efforts. So, you know, that may be something that is topical, timely, to have community members come to. I wonder also about the communication goals that the board has set and the fact that we'll be getting a survey and reinvigorating some of the thinking and resourcing around next steps in communication, and wonder if that might be of a placeholder for a community event, you know, later winter or early in 2022. So instead of having meetings with the community for the sake of being open, demonstrating our openness around particular topics. I do wonder about the staff piece, though, and if there's value in, whether staff would value the opportunity to have this more intimate discussion.
Tom?
I just wanted, since we've put so much effort into social emotional learning, whether that's a topic that you might want to think of as having interest, because, I mean, I think people are interested in like, kind of the emotional recovery from last year, I think, you know, it's something that probably parents themselves have not had, you know, I mean, it's like a new concept, and so I just thought that might be like a topic, there's a lot of work going on. And sometimes, you know, we hear like these systems, but like, what does it mean in terms of the kids, and, you know, when you have that open, I forget the name, is it the open?
Circle.
Open circle, yeah. What does that look like and, you know, because that's, we're putting a lot of investment in something like that, so anyways, I just thought.
Well, you know, along that point, Tom, you know, and talk about like a directed thing, but the strategic plan may be a really good thing. I know we get in the weeds of it, but at the higher level, what the heck are we trying to accomplish in the next five years in the district? Would be a really interesting, I mean, long ago, we first did the first strategic plan, the community was really engaged, they were putting up post-it notes and everything, and we haven't done anything like that at all.
That was the future search.
And it's like, so, you know, we've gone through the pandemic, it's been really chaotic, there's been a lot of social emotional stress, we've spent like two meetings now kind of talking about where we're going, but I don't know if we have had a huge viewership tonight, people watching, but kind of to engage, I mean, engage the community, this is what we're thinking and what do you think about where we're going, I think would be a really good idea.
Some of these topics specifically, what made me think of this, Tom, is SEL or specific subject areas, those are not necessarily board topics, those are not district governance topics, and the board is not, doesn't really necessarily own that content, I guess, I feel, but those are the sort of things that would probably look to the administration principals, the counseling staff to lead those kind of events, and I don't think we need to, I would like to think that we don't need to direct or impede those kind of events from happening to serve the school community. I mean, we can encourage them certainly, but I think our efforts are probably better spent on some of the other things that touch more in the district governance landscape.
Well, that's what I brought, the strategic plan, that we're approving it, and that's a lot of things that we're saying, okay, let's tackle foreign language, that's the strategic plan. So it gives some people ideas of how we're working and what our role really is and how we're, seemingly always comes down to money, but it's like, but how we work and how that's affecting the community.
Right. I want to go back to what Brian said at the beginning about events like open houses. There's lots of opportunities for that beyond open houses, although that's an obvious one, we're bringing people. an obvious one, we're bringing people, people are coming into the schools to learn what's going on. Are there any concerns about that, or any sense of how often, you know, who would be interested in supporting that kind of presence?
So just in terms of planting the flag, in terms of whether we're going to have massive open houses like we've had in the past, based on the Delta variant and our procedures in place, I think administration hasn't yet had those conversations as to whether those will happen at all in this fall. We may want to delay them. I haven't had that conversation with the A team yet, so I want to make sure that I get a sense of what they want to do in this current paradigm we're in with COVID. But I think the idea is great.
So I've done, actually, for UNH, when the new students came in, another counselor, Sally Tobias, and I used to go and meet students and parents and talk to them and welcome to Durham, really. And it was really kind of fun to do, to be honest. But I think in terms of like going to an open house, I think the really important thing, if you're going to have a station, which is the school board, is to explain what we do, rather than like going, okay, we're going to talk about, you know, what the budget, I mean, really informing that this is what the school board is, this is what we do. It'd be a really great place when you've finished the public comments place to say, yeah, if you come, this is how we do public comments, and we like your feedback. And then that really becomes the thrust of meeting us and maybe in the future, recruiting people to be on the school board. So I think it's just an important element to know what we do.
All right. Another dimension is frequency. You know, in terms of large events, I'm going to toss out that we're probably like, maybe three a year is probably kind of what we can reasonably add to the calendar without it becoming, you know, a burden rather than a benefit, maybe. So does that sound like a reasonable number to target? Maybe?
I think so.
I think part of it, you know, we still are in the pandemic as well. And, you know, so part of me is also saying, well, how much do we want to encourage, you know, large groups or, so, you know, I mean.
That would include the video meeting, those three, right, Michael?
What's that?
If we did that as a full board, yeah, I don't know if we can actually do that anymore. I don't know if we can actually have a, we would have to be in, we'd have to have a forum in one place in order to do that, I guess, is I think where we are from a legal perspective.
And we need bigger screens, too, because we do it like on the town side. If the town side we set it up like Zoom-wise now, I'm like, so we're doing the dam, there's a lot of people who don't want to come in, just as to be said. And so we have these two big TVs set up, and, you know, again, I'm sorry, Alexander, because it's such a technical nightmare to try to do it, but we've been able to have people then come on the TV on their Zoom link, and then they're able to do it.
David is the expert at that. He put me on the large screen on the opening day and had all his people come into the cafeteria. So we can figure that part out. But I think Michael's right. We'd have to have a physical presence of the board as well as a remote section and audit to comply with the law. So it's doable. I know that, just so you all know, the teachers have already reached out. They're interested in having that dialogue with all of you that we tried to have last year. And I think that they would be comfortable doing that hybrid kind of model.
Okay. Any other thoughts there? All right, I appreciate the discussion. So school board committee updates? There weren't any, right?
Well, real quick, it's just the policy committee is meeting next week on Thursday the 9th.
Okay, so policy, we'll have a policy update next year.
That's all.
All right, public comment? No? Yes?
I'm still here, so.
You made the whole way.
I'm still here, so I'll say, if you wanted an opinion from a public member regarding Pledge of Allegiance. I'm here, so I'll do it. My view is no, for multiple reasons. One, I thought Al's point was very good regarding that this is a local situation as opposed to a national one. As much as we'd like to have something that is unifying, the Pledge of Allegiance is actually divisive, based upon how everybody interprets it. And so I think it'd actually be a can of worms that we wouldn't necessarily want to open, and it wouldn't serve the purpose that Brian wants to have happen. And the second part is that I personally actually don't like the Pledge of Allegiance at all at school, because it's asking children who are below the age of consent to take an oath, that they're not developmentally capable or legally capable either of taking. And that's aside the whole thing of having an explicitly monotheistic religion endorsed inside of it. So that's just my view as a general public member. Good night.
Thank you. All right. So closing actions, we have our future meeting dates there, September 15th, September 29th is a manifest meeting only, because there are five Wednesdays in September, and then October 6th, regular meeting, right back here in the high school library. Motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Motion by Al, second by Dan, all those in favor, seven in favor, the student rep in favor. We are adjourned. We will reconvene for a non-meeting in 10 minutes at 9:25. Where are we going to be for that?
We'll be in the counselor's conference.
In the counselor's conference. All right, thank you.